Apologies for being two minutes late. We are now back in open session. And I am going to kick it over to you, I think, Martha. Is that correct?
Do we need to go?
Oh, nope. I gotta do, we already did the roll call and everything, right? I don't have to redo that.
Yeah, no, no roll call.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay, so then I will move into superintendent's report.
All right. Well, I am very excited. There is a group here from Ames School, and I'm going to introduce the principal, Todd Gierman, who's going to introduce the teacher, and then they'll introduce, she'll introduce the students.
Good evening, District 96 Board of Education, Dr. Ryan Toy. I want to thank you for the opportunity to showcase the unit of instruction that Ms. Schillitz has been implementing with her third grade students at Ames this school year. We are very fortunate to have Ms. Schillitz here this evening along with her third grade students. I want to welcome, I'm going to introduce, since you guys just want to stand over here for now, a few more things I want to say. But tonight, we have presentations with James Barrera. James, why don't you wave to the Board of Education? Thank you, James. Harper Kohfeld, Harper, you want to give a wave? All right. Savannah Cuthem, Savannah, give a wave. Excellent. Jonas Eckert, there's Jonas. Iris Graham, there's Iris. And Penny Hermsdorf, there's Penny. Excellent. So I'm going to turn over the mic to you guys pretty soon, okay? One of my favorite things to do as a building principal is to recommend great teachers to hire for my building, mentor them, support them, and most importantly, get out of their way and let them do what they do best. Ms. Schillitz is a perfect example of a great teacher. I recall a lesson a few years ago, this was pre-COVID, where Ms. Schillitz and I were sitting down reflecting on a lesson she did in her third grade mathematics class that focused on mathematical arrays. During our post-observation conference, and being a math teacher myself in a previous life, I simply mentioned that I loved her lesson on arrays and that there is so much you can do with arrays that can be applied to the real world. As a result of this conversation that took place, and again, several, several years ago, Ms. Schillitz not only ran with some of these ideas we discussed during her observation, she took it to a level I hadn't even thought of. And without further ado, let me introduce Ms. Schillitz and her third grade students to show you how they use arrays in mathematics.
Hi, I'm Ariel Schillitz. I'm a third grade teacher at Ames. This is my fifth year teaching in the district. I had a little Hollywood and some remote during the COVID days, but I'm back at Ames and I'm really happy to be at my home school. And I brought along with me six out of my 22 wonderful friends this year, and they are going to introduce themselves and tell them, tell you guys about a little fun fact about themselves, and then we'll get started on the presentation.
Hi, my name is Savannah, and I really like to learn about space.
Hello, my name is Penny, and my favorite subject is math.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Iris, and I like to play Tony Hawk's Pro Skater.
Hi, my name is Harper, and I love dolphins.
Hello, my name is Jonas, and I like to play soccer and basketball.
Hi, my name is James, and my favorite colors are black and white.
Welcome to Math Hatton.
How we started. First, we looked at pictures of downtown Chicago. Ms. Schillitz showed us these pictures so that we could see arrays on buildings in Chicago. Then, we thought of our own arrays. We cut out the shape of our building and created the arrays out of windows for our building. We described our arrays using repeated addition in words and using a multiplication equation. The last step was that we brainstormed possible city names and voted on Math Hatton.
What is it and why Math Hatton? Math Hatton is an ongoing math project where you apply what we are learning in the classroom to a smaller project. We are doing it to relate math to what we see outside every day. We are also doing it to help us work together in groups. The projects are different and fun from what we are used to doing every day in math.
Next step, stores. We worked with groups to decide on what kind of store we wanted to open. In our city, we named the store. Ms. Schillitz gave us an array where we had to write the multiplication equation that was shown on the array. And then, we broke apart a factor in order to solve the multiplication equation. Some students chose to open a prime store, a cookie store, and a donut shop.
City opening. When we had our buildings and stores complete, we had our city opening. We had a ribbon cutting to officially open our city and reveal the name of it. It was fun to have an official city opening because it was more fun than other things we do in math. It celebrated what we have worked on so far in our city.
Present day. We are making houses, police stations, and other buildings that are found in cities. For each building, we are finding the rate, um, area and perimeter. Then, we will get to design the inside of each, um, of each building and find the area and perimeter of those different parts.
Future of Math Hatton. In the future, we are going to use fractions in our city to show what we are learning. We will also apply what we learned in our geometry unit to add shapes and other figures to our city. We hope that we can find, also find other concepts and co-op with projects on our own to add to Math Hatton.
I just want to say thank you for allowing these third graders to come in and present. I give them credit. It takes a lot of confidence to come up here in front of a lot of adults and do that. I also want to give them credit, they took their Zoom time, their lunchtime yesterday, or, yeah, yesterday, to help write the script, so that was all written by them. And I just typed it up for them. So thank you, and thank you to their parents for bringing them here and just supporting them at home for their growth and their learning. If you guys have any questions, they would be more than happy to answer any that you have.
Good job.
I have a question.
Excellent.
What's the biggest building that you have? Is it a store? Is it a school? Is it a business?
Yeah, Iris, you want to turn the stuff on?
Yeah. I think the biggest one is one of the things we're, one of the buildings we're working on right now.
Ooh.
What's it going to house?
Something exciting?
The police station or the firehouse?
The police station.
Or maybe the mall, there's a mall.
Ooh.
Yeah, the hospital's also big.
Yeah.
That's very cool. You guys thought of everything.
We haven't compared areas yet, so.
Oh, okay.
What was, I don't have the right way to ask this question. What was the, either the thing that surprised you the most that you learned? Or like, the best thing that you learned? Like, what was your favorite part of this, of what you learned?
Go ahead.
My favorite part of what we learned was probably the project we're doing right now.
Building the city?
Yes.
Opening, what store are you opening?
I am opening the firehouse with my friend Bella.
Takes a lot of work to open a firehouse. Didn't get her on that one.
I did hear that maybe this group has a joke to share too. They said if there was time, they might be able to share a joke.
Why did the banana go to the doctor? Because he wasn't peeling well.
What do you call a fish with no eyes? Uffsch.
What do you get when you cross an octopus with a cowboy? Billy the squid.
Perfect example of the talent we have in this group. Thank you. All right, thank you for coming out. Appreciate that. We're still in superintendent.
We were going to have our audit presentation following that, signing Math Hatton presentation, but our auditor's sick, so we're going to wait on that until our February Cow meeting. And I know they're taking a picture, but then you are welcome to stay for the board meeting, of course, but don't feel bad.
Yeah, feel free to leave.
Yes. All right. And then I did just want to share a few words. I added this to the agenda under superintendent's report about the e-learning days that we had on Friday and on Tuesday this week. I want to thank our families and our teachers, most of all. I know it is never really the preferred way to do things, but given the significant weather that we had, both snow and significant cold, it was much appreciated, the cooperation, the opportunities, and really making this happen. I also feel like I need to share, people probably honestly know that probably the big heroes of the day were our custodians and our buildings and grounds crew, and also our public safety director. We had burst pipes. We had a sprinkler system that failed today. We had power that went down. So we really kind of, everything that you think can happen on those bad weather days over the course of Friday to Tuesday really did happen here in the school district. So things are fixed, things are up and running. Our schools were warm enough today and dry enough for everybody. So I heard that our custodian team was here till 2:30 in the morning one night over the weekend, and I know our buildings and grounds team was over at Blithe at 4:00 in the morning dealing with a boiler yesterday. So just a huge thank you to everybody that helps us get through days like we have had over the past several. So anyway, I thought the board should be aware of that as well as the community. So special thanks to everyone mentioned there. Also, just wanted to share a couple announcements. Our virtual kindergarten night has been announced as March 7th. We decided during our pandemic years that sending a kindergarten information night or doing it virtually really made sense, especially for our families with incoming five-year-old children. So that's something we started doing several years ago and have continued to do that. So we do a release on a certain day, but then it's available for families to watch whenever. But it also really signals the opening of our registration process for kindergarten. So hard to believe that's all going to get going here very, very soon. I know at the last board meeting, there was talk about the 24, 25 school calendar. We do still need some additional time with our teachers to gather some feedback, based on the feedback that you provided at the meeting. And so we don't have that ready to approve yet, so I'm sort of noting that it's really just not listed as an action item under older new business for us. So more to follow on that in February. We also have a couple of things. I know I had shared one of these at our last meeting. We have a couple other family nights and parent nights coming up. We have a keeping our kids cyber safe on February 12th. That'll be a parent information session. And then we have a family STEM night, which will be all families, parents bringing their children on February 28th, and a special partnership going on with our bilingual parent advisory group also, so offering some of the sessions in Spanish. So excited about that. And a special thanks to our instructional coach, Sarah Hickey, and my partner on family and community partnerships, who's really leading and organizing that with a group of teachers who will be running different parts of the night. But we're going to have a robotics team doing a demonstration. Our student leadership group from Hauser is going to be doing some work with children and with families. So just a lot of pieces included in that night. So sure to be great. So mark your calendar for that. And then also, all good news tonight, really. I have the opportunity to share with all of you the Illinois Association of School Boards School Board Governance Recognition Award. So you all have a lapel pin next to your name plate. So that is the lapel pin that is part of this award, but also the plaque. And, you know, Kathy was mentioning, she didn't know if you wanted to handle this like the Stanley Cup and travel around to your homes to take pictures of it, things like that. Or if you'd like to hang it, us to hang it in the district office, but I will pass it around. In all seriousness, this is a great award. It is a relatively small number of Illinois school districts that have this opportunity, and it really speaks to the great governance, the great direction that this board has established in having a high-quality public education system here in District 96. So Wesley, I'll let you be the first to have that as president and accept that.
Kathy, if you can get us a little, like, stand or something like that? We'll put it right here for.
Although, no pressure on all the empty space.
A lot more years to fill.
I did notice in the letter, it said if you need your new year magnet, or what do they call it, year tab magnet, that, so I think there is an expectation that maybe you keep filling that in. So, good point, Stephanie.
I mean, we set a high expectation, so we gotta, we gotta keep maintaining.
Yeah. So congratulations, the board. Well deserved, so.
Thank you, Martha.
Yeah, that's the superintendent's report.
All right. With that, we will move into the consent agenda. So could the board secretary please read tonight's consent agenda?
Yep. Tonight's consent agenda consists of minutes of the following previous meetings, the December 6th Committee of the Whole Meeting, the December 20th Regular Business Meeting, along with the Closed Session Meeting Minutes from December 20th. The Personnel Report as Presented, Payables Pre-List from January 17th, along with the Payables Pre-List from December 31st. The School Library Program, School District Library Program Grant, the Employee Recognition Event for 23, 24 school year, and the Employee Wellness Event for 23, 24 as well. And that's tonight's consent agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Does any board member want to remove any of these items for further discussion? Nope. Joel, just a quick check, can you hear us okay? Okay, just want to make sure as we move into the talking part of the night. All right, so Kathy, could you please call the roll? I'm sorry. Is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Some moves.
Second.
Kathy, will you please call the roll?
Okay. Ms. Clapp?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
I think you're on mute, Joel. Aye, okay.
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next section is board member comments. Might jump in here and just kind of ditto to you, Martha, on all the e-learning stuff. Thanks for paying attention to the weather. And I know in a brief chat you and I had, which we were planning on meeting Thursday anyway about it, first thing I asked you was what we're doing tomorrow? And just the collaboration you always have with the surrounding school districts and everything. I'm not sure how much the general public realizes that that is a very big coordinated event that you try to go through with at least our nearby districts. But it is pretty tricky when a lot of our staff have students that may not be going to school that day too. So just, it's a, it is kind of a hard thing for you to make those decisions with your counterparts, so appreciate that. Anybody else have any comments?
Well, it's only been two days, but I would think that from what I saw in both my kids, definitely their teachers had them well-prepared, had them kept busy, a lot of things to do, and a lot of, a lot of fun was had from what I could see as well. So I think it seemed like a very productive day for two days for both of my kids.
All right.
Not just, I mean, even my dog enjoyed Zoom school. He made multiple appearances in class.
I heard a lot of pets made some appearances during their, during their class.
I offered to let my pharmacy students show their stuffies when I had to teach on Friday with everybody. I was like, oh, my kindergartner just got to, although, they all got to show their stuffy on camera. 200 pharmacy students want to do that? They didn't, incidentally, but.
I know in my family, the, like, being that we just came off a long winter break, like, to have the continuity of learning and not have another break, I think, really served my kids well. So, and I understand that it was challenging for many families and weather can be frustrating, but thank you to the administration and to all of our teachers for making it happen, because I think it did really serve our students well.
All right, if nothing else, I will move on. So first item in old business is school fees, one of our favorite topics. We do have a memo in here, and so Jim, I might need, where's Jim at? Jim, I might need a little assistance just making sure I get all this stuff right when we throw it in here. I don't want to say the wrong thing. Okay, so we've been talking about this for a while, and we've been talking about it at the table. I've connected with people individually outside of this meeting as well. And so where we're at today, we're all in agreement that we want to move to the flat fee schedule, and we do not want to include the student fees unless anybody's changed an opinion on that. I think that's, I think we were 7-0 on that, if I counted correctly. The one debate is how much the fees are. And so I asked Jim if he could put together a 50-50 split and then what we call like a revenue neutral. And so Jim, if you could just help me, I'll just like, like, what is the difference there? What exactly should everybody be looking at on this one?
There's a box at the right, the first column in that box is how we've always done it since I've been here. Inflation and then, and then rounding to the five. The second column is trying to flatten out the fees, but still bring in the same amount of money. And then the green one there, the third column, is kind of flattening, flattening out the fees, but to cover 50% of the costs. So I think tonight, we're going to decide between the blue column and the green column.
And then the difference between that is what I want to make sure I get right. That's about a $40,000, that's the fourth, 40,880 number that we have on the top part of this?
Right.
Okay. That was the part I wanted to make sure I got right. So 50-50 split would add or would cost the district an additional $40,000 that's not being covered by fees, which is currently covered by fees. Or the blue column, the revenue neutral, is to do what Jim just said and create a flat schedule instead of a graduated schedule. And then that would balance out to be revenue neutral. So we would not, the district would not be putting any more money in. The other caveat, not directly related, but tangent to this, is with the school supplies, a lot of folks have asked for consistent supply lists by grade. And on those lists, there's, you know, things like wipes and, I just kind of call them cleaning supplies. Remove those. All of that stuff goes out of the.
Facilities.
Facility fund. That is not part of our direct materials. So just as we're thinking about that, when, if a parent wants to go out and buy their own supplies, that's less that they will have to buy on the supply list. I don't know directly if any of the PTA boxes, I don't think those boxes include that stuff. They do include that stuff. Okay. I don't know if those are customizable or.
Yeah.
Okay, so you just kind of like buy what you want, what you need?
You, well, no, in this, no, I guess in the sense that you, the, we would send them the list for each grade, and they would just fulfill.
Oh, okay.
Whatever that is. So if.
Okay.
Bleach wipes are on it, then you get bleach wipes, and Ziploc bags, you get Ziploc bags.
Gotcha. Okay, so those boxes, I don't really know how that works. So those boxes are not pre-canned, it's whatever, we, like, we send it, they package it all up, and then they ship it out individually boxed?
Right, but you don't pick, you don't pick and choose like, well, I just don't want pencils in this. The PTA sends the list.
But it's the specific school supply list for your grade at your school.
For each grade, right.
Gotcha, okay. Did not appreciate that, so thank you. So that will be less money in supplies that the district will be picking up as we're debating the 50-50 or the revenue neutral. So I know there'd been some dialogue about wanting to reduce fees for families or just take some of that financial burden off. So I don't think the supply list reduction is going to be a complete offset of a revenue neutral fee, depending on which grade you're in, because certain grades are going down, some grades are going up, others are going to be about the same. But that's kind of the gist of the entire dialogue here. So I will make a motion based on whatever we decide here. So I just need to know where everybody stands on the 50-50 or the revenue neutral. And then I'll put that in the motion with flat fees and, just flat fees, because we're not going to include the school supplies.
My, on the revenue neutral, I'm, I'm wondering why we're keeping K through 5 at paying 50% of their fees or of their, of their costs per student? But then, we're having the junior high students at closer to about 80% of their total supply fees or costs.
So that was just sort of how it came out when we started just doing the numbers based on what, I guess, what was paid in the past. So we looked at the costs and trying to tie the cost to, tying the cost to the fees. So that's how it came out in the numbers. Personally, I think for simplicity's sake, we do the 50-50 split. I think that's, yes, the district's going to pay more money, but I think it just, we tied it to a specific cost. It's a flat, I mean, it's going to be 50% of the cost for both district and, and the, and the families. I do not think we should be even worrying about the revenue neutral. And it's just, I brought that, I've only looked at that to basically, because I know there might be a concern about making this revenue neutral. I, given the small amount, I'd say let's just keep it 50-50 and move forward from there going.
To answer what Dave just said is, this is exactly how it was before we.
Right.
Last year, the year before, the year before, the year before. I, the Hauser's always been about 80% or something like that. It's always been higher than the elementaries. So revenue neutral is taking the fees from the elementary school and evening those out, and then the separate fees for Hauser and evening those out. We've always had people pay higher fees at Hauser. I don't know why. But that's how it was when I joined the board four years ago.
I guess Hauser parents have, basically, the only difference I see then, you know, is he, it gives Hauser parents either a break or a bigger hit, depending on which avenue we go through. And, and definitely as someone who's put two kids through RB, I'll note that you really got to buckle up for those fees when RB issues them. They're a lot more than $200.
I don't know that the Hauser parents are going to really be taking a hit though, because for grade six, it's a $10 increase, for grade seven, it's a $5 increase, grade eight, it's a $20 decrease. So that's.
That's if we do the 50% rule.
No, that's for the revenue neutral.
Oh, okay, I take that back.
If we do the 50-50, everybody gets a discount. It goes down to 130 from 190, 195 to 200.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
I think that it's a fair point that it's, this is the way that we've always done it, but that's why we're at this table.
Correct.
It's to think about whether or not that was the correct way to do it, right? So I think we should keep an open mind about, it doesn't need to be A or B. And if we are going to do, if we are going to consider revenue neutral, then it should be in a way that some families are not subsidizing other families in the district.
I guess, let me ask this, just as a John question. Are we concerned about being revenue neutral in what? I don't. I think in the past, the way we've done this in the past was not the best way of doing it. And so, in my opinion, we've made mistakes in the past in doing, in doing this. We've tied it to fees. We can definitely now quantify this and say, this is what the fees are for. I think, I think we, for me, it, to me, the past is not something we should be considering. We should look at going forward, what's going to be best for the district, the families.
I absolutely agree.
I think you can make the subsidization argument in what we were doing, because grade four and five pays 120 in pre-K, and kindergarten only pay 85 and 90. So I mean, I think part of the issue, Selena, is none of us really know how these fee structures got started. So I agree with your point, just because we've always done it, doesn't mean it's the right thing to do, so.
Also, I'll say though, for, I mean, just realistically, a kindergartner is not going to use the resources nearly as much as, you know, an eighth grader, so that's just, that's, I think, just what it's consumable and what they're needing, what their uses are. I think that that can explain some of the differences there. Before we move off it, I would though, I would personally advocate for being revenue neutral, particularly as was pointed out to me here, that the differences in the high school side, which are the bigger differences, it's not that much added. I guess where it's hitting people, it's going to hit them one way or another, is, you know, a kindergartner right now would pay $85 and is going to pay 110 under each formula. So I honestly, given the options that I'm seeing here, I would, I would go with revenue neutral, given that it's closer to what's being paid now. And as I mentioned, when they're hit RB, they're going to, you know, I don't know that they'll appreciate the $70 difference between 200 and 130 by the time they're looking at, you know, all the technology fees that get handed on when you start RB.
I was just going to say, I mean, I appreciate the insight about RB. I'm not really, like, making the decision for our district based on, like, future costs. I mean, by that argument, and I am in higher ed, like, you know, what college tuition is going to cost, et cetera. For the last two years, as everybody knows, or perhaps you don't, but I voted no to the fee increases, because I have felt that they are arbitrary. I have not understood, understood them. I felt like it lacked transparency. So I really appreciate the work of the board and Jim and others in getting us to this kind of flat fee structure. I think that we're all in agreement that that is the way to go, as you mentioned, Wes. But I like and I prefer the 50-50. I think we are a district that can allow for that. We don't have to be revenue neutral. We are fortunate that we are able to subsidize 50% of the cost. I think that creates a sense of, you know, kind of equity and fairness and cost sharing among families and the district. So I am, you know, in favor of the flat fees at a 50% subsidization, and also want to stress the importance of, you know, fees or supply costs such as Kleenex, bags, wipes, you know, being kind of subsidized by other funds at the district, and then really streamlining what we are asking families to purchase over the summer and ensuring that we're not, you know, overpurchasing supplies at that point. So I am not, to your point, Dave, as concerned, sure, I don't want to say it flippantly, but it is my, not my biggest concern. I feel really comfortable with the 50% subsidization, subsidizing.
And, and if there is concern, I mean, we didn't have the finance presentation tonight, but we are putting, again, a significant amount of money into our reserves. So, our expenditures are far less, are less, I shouldn't say far less, but are less than what we're taking in. So, we can, we can definitely, the district can definitely, can and I think should, should absorb this cost.
Marlo, I'm not calling on you, 'cause your phone rang, you're just up next.
No, I actually, I, I feel good with the fifty percent share. I think that kind of helps include, I think, I, I agree with what Stephanie said, and I, I feel like it kind of helps include the families that, you know, that's a jump from, from grade five to junior high. And like, if we, as a district, can afford that, then I think we should try to share that ability with our families.
All right, Selena, your decision might solidify the conversation.
I think that doing a fifty fifty split is clean. It's, doesn't feel as arbitrary as you're paying this percent, they're paying this percent. So, of the two options, I'm certainly in favor of the fifty fifty share and, yeah.
Okay, well, that's four. So, Joel, any comments you wanna add? Oh, I can't hear you.
I can't hear you, Joel.
Because Don is talking, is that right?
Oh, 'cause he's locked on.
Says ask to unmute. Does, do you need to unmute him, Don? Oh, I see, that's two hand on, okay.
Still can't hear him.
Still can't hear you, Joel.
Yeah, it still looks like somehow muted there too.
Oh, oh, yeah.
We got something.
That's good.
Yep.
Yeah, I got you.
And then we lost you.
Yeah.
Oh, Don isn't here, Joel.
Joel, can you go off your headset?
Did you go through your computer audio by chance?
All right.
All right.
He says thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
He can give us a fifty fifty or a
I wanna say Joel, Joel sent me an email on this. I wanna say Joel was on the revenue neutral side. If he wants to add additional comments, he'll have to do that at another point in time.
All right.
I'll, I'll just, for the record, I'll just say, I actually was revenue neutral coming into this meeting, but I, I think, just kinda the comments that you two made, I, I think has kind of swayed me over to the other side. I really don't have, like, a strong opinion on this, so I'll, I'll put my name in the fifty fifty bucket, although it doesn't really matter at this point, 'cause we got four people that are in favor of it. So, I really was on the fence e- either way here. Okay, so, the, the only pieces to this motion are that we are gonna switch the fees to a flat fee. And we are going to do that as a fifty fifty cost split. We're not including the supplies, so that doesn't need to be part of the motion. And then, I think, also just kinda continuing with, I don't know what the CPI inflationary rate will do with, like, the whole five dollar thing, but I, I think generally speaking, we just wanted to kinda stick with CPIs, like, the inflationary process. And then, we, we do talk about this exhaustively every single year. We were gonna try to button this up with this more extensive conversation and put this in the consent agenda for the next couple of years, ideally. So, just putting that on the table, that we're all agreeing to that, and just kinda going back to our, our board agreements, that once we make a decision, we don't rehash it and just, just throw that out there. So, as long as we're all good with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion. Okay, so, is there a motion to approve student fees? To, to change the fee schedule to a flat fee schedule across grade elementary and, and middle school at a fifty percent of costs for the materials as presented in board book?
So moved.
Second.
Kathy, can you call the roll?
Mr. Marhol? Mr. Barsadi?
Hi.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Ms. Gunn?
Hi.
Ms. Kalik?
Hi.
Ms. Claps?
Hi.
And Mr. Mayorhead?
Hi. All right. I feel like we made some real progress here.
We're done now, right?
We're done, for at least a couple of years, hopefully. Something material happens, you know, we can always bring it back up.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you still get to go shop for your folder.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Looking forward to it.
Sorry, you don't have to, you know, throw elbows for wipes anymore, but you can still go to your
Wipes are always frustrating me, because I couldn't even use the Costco ones, those were too bad.
All right. Next item is a intergovernmental agreement regarding the improvements to the Blythe Park tennis courts that we discussed at the last meeting. So, is there a motion to approve the revised intergovernmental agreement regarding improvements to Blythe Park tennis courts between Riverside School District Ninety-Six and the Village of Riverside as presented?
So moved. Second.
Is there any further discussion on this topic before we vote? See Joel shaking his head. All right, we're good. Okay, I think, I think we're all good on this one. Kathy, will you please call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Barsadi?
Hi.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Ms. Gunn?
Hi.
Ms. Kalik?
Hi.
Ms. Claps?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol? And Mr. Mayorhead?
Hi. We're making it work. Technology's wonderful. Okay, next item is the Press Plus number one thirteen policies that we discussed at last meeting and are now voting to approve. We have a number of questions in here that are filled in and the motion is written as such. But I guess before we get into the motion, is, is there any additional commentary that anybody wants to have on any of these policies? Or is everybody sufficient with the information they have to vote?
I'll just quickly close the loop. As always, the board brought some really great questions to us after the first read, and we were able to have additional discussions. Also with our attorney on some of the outstanding questions for clarification. So, the ones that have questions, the default answer is what we are presenting to you. Again, after additional discussion, that is what we are proposing. Just a few that I wanna provide a little bit more clarity on. The, the hiring process criteria five thirty, just heads up that what we do is sufficient. This was the one that required posting of salaries and benefits. So, actually, Nikki said what we're doing now is sufficient even with the steps. A range is also fine, so we're not really kinda sweating that, we're, we're fine. One will be pulled out via the motion, which we can have additional discussion on. And those, I think, that was one of the main ones I wanted to just clarify.
And that was the one, that's policy five-two-fifty on leaves of absence. And there's a new law that says that a parent that loses their child by homicide or suicide has a very specific bereavement leave opportunity. And at the last minute, not the last minute, at the last meeting, you had all asked about, is there a way to sort of extend that? And, you know, why wouldn't there be a leave if a parent lost a child in, let's say, a car accident was the question that you had asked? So, Nikki said the answer is straightforward in that it is about this law, that this new law in the books about the homicide and suicide.
Like a specific case, yeah, case law.
Yeah, so it's, it's tight, like, we see policies that come forward like that, where there's a, a new law and it's, you know, the policy needs to be revised up for that reason. The board expressed some interest in sort of extending the language. And she said we could certainly do that by adding a sentence that said, the board at its discretion could extend a similar leave for, you know, parents who may lose a child for other reasons, or something to that effect. So, that's why we, Stephanie had talked, we purposely left this one off, because if you want that revision, then I would just have Nikki create that sort of added sentence or two or three for us, and we would bring that back for a separate vote.
That's not
Sometimes I know the board likes to stay tight with, like, oh, like, there was a great question, like, why? It's just, it's truly this, this new law in the books.
And that's for five
Five-two-fifty, that's why it's pulled from the motion. If, again, just based on feedback from the last meeting, again, dug into it more, the why is, it came from a very specific case law, so that's why it's written so tightly. If we are comfortable with it, as is, knowing that, then we don't have to pull it out. We can just vote on it the way it's presented. But if we preferred to have language written up such that it's not so specific to the death by homicide or suicide, we can do that and then vote on it separately. We would just draft a line and run it by our attorney.
Yeah. I mean, I know I was the one who, like, brought this up last time. I mean, my personal thoughts on this is that we need, we, it's, I mean, it makes no sense to me. I mean, if we're, if we're gonna just do it because Illinois says we're gonna do this or create this, like, really tight exception. I think a death of a child, regardless how it is, if it's suicide, homicide, or, like, accidental drowning or what have you, we should get, we should extend it to anyone who loses a child.
I definitely appreciate the sentiment. I would love to have heard from the board attorney about, I guess I've, I've heard from previous board attorneys about not wanting to stray too far in our language away from the standard, standard motion or standard policies. And that is something that's concerning to me, just because I don't know what I don't know. And is there an unintended consequence, or do we open doors unintentionally by adding that additional language? That's not a question I have answered right now.
The other thing I'll just add related to that is that our REC contract, which, you know, governs most of our employees, not all, has sort of generous leave language for bereavement. So, you know, the other, again, it, it sort of implied that it probably could be addressed in another way, not necessarily through policy. It could be through our, our contract and our employment agreements. She didn't advise one way or the other, so maybe this is a better part of the, she didn't really advise one way or the other in terms of, oh, I wouldn't stray from the, the legal language here. Because you're right, sometimes that advice is, is that way. And this one, she's like, oh, if, if you'd like to add that, you know,
Yeah.
phrase or, you know, sentences, happy to do it.
I wholeheartedly agree with everything you said, but I don't like it for all the reasons that Dan said. I don't know what I don't know. And I just don't wanna step into a trap that we didn't foresee coming. So, I'd prefer to just leave it, if it's case law specific, I'd prefer to just leave it, 'cause I don't really know all the details around that.
Knowing that there are avenues for
Other avenues, yeah.
You know.
Yeah, no, I mean
The other situations.
I, I can, I can see that. I, like I said, I just, it just does not sit well with me. It just does not
Nor I. I, 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 I don't like the fact that this, this carve-out, it doesn't make any sense to me. It seems really strange to carve out this small change in, making us, making us change a policy for just these really almost seem like pulled at random situations.
And, and I guess, though, I guess to, to your point, Dan, and I mean, I, I can understand him, 'cause I know we've done this in the past, like, we don't know what we don't know. But this is, I guess, I don't see how what we don't know could really, we're just expanding something. We're just making it for any kid. It's not, it's not like there's, to me, there doesn't seem to be any ambiguity to it.
I, I don't, I don't see how either, and I understand what you're saying. I don't think there would be ambiguity there, but again, I didn't go to law school.
Yeah.
And it, that, it gives me pause from, again, the advice that we've been given in the past is not to stray from language like this, not like this, but just language and policy. And not having a board attorney here to ask them these questions and get them sufficiently answered, I, I would not be comfortable expanding it. And also with the idea that there are sufficient avenues elsewhere in the REC contract to address situations that we're intending to cover here.
When is this vote required to happen?
By the end of February.
February twenty seventh, I believe, is when these policies need to be
Okay, so it doesn't have to happen today?
No, which is why we're gonna pull it anyway. We assume there'd be either more discussion and/or the need to go write language, but it feels like perhaps just the discussion and time to think on it. Or I'm not sure what else might be helpful to the board for this one.
So, curious, I don't know if Joel's gonna get working here or not, but your perspective from Marlo and Selena. I mean, if we got six people just wanting to move forward, let's just move forward. But if we wanna continue this discussion with Dave, I'm happy to hear it, just not vote on it tonight. So, just curious where you two are at.
I, I guess as long as it's not, like, excluding, the, the, the rest, that the other part of the contract, like Martha just said, is, still has leave available for parents who lose children. And this was just kind of like an addition to that, and the leave is not that much different? Then I don't know that it needs to be pulled out. I don't know.
I'll tell you what, why don't I just make a decision? Why don't we not vote on this one tonight? Because I, I hear doubts, and I don't want people voting when they have doubts on something. Why don't we just put this on the next board meeting?
That's fine. Just, Selena, do you have something you want to share tonight?
No, I, I, I mean, if we're in a position
Okay.
Okay, okay.
We had to, we had to transcribe your, your writing. You got you, Joel.
Thank you, Joel.
Thanks, Joel.
I was texting Don to follow Joel's number.
All right, Selena, sorry, go.
I'm in agreement with Dan. Was sticking with the language as it's been suggested to us and knowing that we have other avenues to address this in the employment contracts.
Okay. We got five of us.
That's fine. All, I just
I'm open, but I'm just like, I'm, I'm good with voting.
So, if we can just leave it as is, 'cause I, I don't wanna vote for it. I can't vote for that policy.
Okay. I mean, you can have it voted down too. I'll just leave it out.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm, I'm just saying, when we vote, I'm okay with all the other policies.
Yeah, just not this one. Okay, so I'll, I'll move ahead with the motion as we have it stands. I'm gonna reword it just to maybe be a little less clunky. So, all of the policies other than this one are in items I dot three dot A through I dot three dot AC. So, is there a motion?
Are there, are there any questions that need answered though first?
There, so all of the questions have the answers in them, and so I'm just gonna say with the motion as indicated, with the answers as indicated in board book. Are you, are you okay with defaults there?
I am.
Okay. I'm gonna get all the way back up to the top here. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the second reading and approval of Press Plus policies as presented with items I dot three dot A through I dot three dot AC? As presented in board book with the four policies with questions answered with the default option as noted in board book?
So moved.
Second.
Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Ms. Gunn?
Hi.
Ms. Kalik?
Hi.
Ms. Claps?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol? Mr. Barsadi?
Hi.
And Mr. Mayorhead?
Hi.
Okay, motion passes.
Okay, hold me back down here. Okay, so I dot four is policy five colon two fifty, leaves of absence that we just discussed. I think we've had our discussion here, so let's go ahead and make a motion. Is there a motion to approve policy five colon two fifty, leaves of absence with the default? I don't, what is my motion here? So, it's policy five-two-fifty.
And the default deals with the number of employees, which was the easy part of the answer.
Mm-hmm.
Easy part to answer.
Right.
Yeah.
So, is that what we're, I'm not voting on that, right?
I thought we were just tabling this whole thing until next meeting.
No.
We're gonna move forward with it, and Dave's gonna, Dave's just gonna vote no.
Okay.
Yeah.
I got you, okay.
But I think the, the question here is just how many employees do you have, right? So, we're just voting on the policy. Okay, so, is there a motion to approve policy five colon two fifty, leaves of absence as presented in board book?
So moved.
Second.
Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Claps?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol? Mr. Barsadi?
Hey.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Ms. Gunn?
Hi.
Ms. Kalik?
Hi.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Hi.
Motion passed.
Can always discuss it if you can, or something like that too, so. I hear what you're saying, I think we do, I think we all do.
Hopefully, they provide some updated language after maybe feedback.
Yeah, hopefully we never, no one ever has to use that policy.
I miss Shelley. Shelley would've told us the ins and outs and who, who put the I miss Shelley, Shelley would have told us the ins and outs and who, who put this forward and why, because I swear that's, that's what's missing here, is why is this presented in such weird, only these cases, you know, that, that just doesn't, never made any sense.
Okay, um, the next one might be quick. Dave and it's the, I, I asked Martha, I meant to do this in the last meeting and I forgot until like mid-meeting. We, Dave and Stephanie and I attended the I A S B, I A S B O slash I A S A conference, the, the big board conference that happens every year in November. I think I told this to the two of them when we were having lunch, I don't know how I didn't do this prior to this year, it was actually much more valuable than I anticipated. I go to, I go to, I've been to a fair number of conferences and they're, you know, they're kinda hit or miss, but every single session I went to, I learned something from, some more than others, uh, but I just thought this would be an opportunity for the three of us just to give a little recap of, of, uh, what we went to and what we learned from it. So I did one on effective principles, and I think the biggest, the biggest topic here was really about the principal pipeline and just how the job has changed so much over time and things that boards can do to help support their principals and also try to increase the pipeline, and I, and that's something that I've talked to Martha about quite extensively, not principles specifically, but just like pipelining and succession planning and growth and development of employees and things like that. So there was, um, there was a chart that they showed, uh, that back in 2011, at that point in time, there was over twenty-five hundred principals in, however they measure this, like in the pipeline, um, principal prep completers, I don't really know what that is, but something measurable, that has steadily declined to a four hundred fifty-seven people in, uh, 2022. And so it's just showing that there's been an eighty-three percent drop, and right after 2014, it kind of falls off a cliff and then sort of does one of these things, but there's a, there seems to be a lot of concern about principals, um, in the future as principals start retiring. So that was an interesting one. There was one, uh, little hit or miss, it was fun to go to, but what your superintendent would like to tell you but can't. Honestly, I think everything they told me, I've heard from you, so we must have a, we must have a pretty good relationship with you. Um, Saturday morning, I attended a trauma session, which actually I did not realize this, uh, didn't, didn't resonate with me until I got in the room, but Doug Bolton was the one that did this presentation, and he was our keynote speaker for the start of the school year with the teachers, and his presentation was amazing, as it was the first time I saw it, a little bit of a twist on it, but really getting into how your brain works and trauma, and really focused on, um, students with a lot of heavy trauma in there, and so talking about like abuse and, um, drugs and mental health and, you know, things like that, and he's, he's clearly an expert in this, and, and I hear about this all the time, because this is the industry my wife is in, and why I ask a lot of questions about the district of like behavior and discipline and things like that, you know, what, what are the things that we can do to, to help students, um, in the capacity that we have the ability to do that? And there's just some interesting data in here about children that have more, you know, a certain number of these red flags, so to speak, the statistics really show that, um, as you get over certain thresholds, like you really have to be concerned for people's well-built, well-being and, and things like that, so that was pretty interesting. And then we talked about super, uh, went to one on superintendent contracts and superintendent evaluations. Both of those, I think was a lot of things we already know, but just kind of hearing it being repeated and, um, seeing it through different lenses and, and getting it through different mediums is, is always good, um, just to kind of fact-check yourself on things that you read and, and stuff like that. So I thought all of mine were, were really good, and, um, I don't know, Dave or Stephanie, if you've got any highlights that you want to share, and then I don't know if there's any questions from anybody.
Um, well, I know we, um, shared some notes, and, and I'll just echo what Wesley said, in my second year attending, um, it is such a large-scale conference, and even at any given hour, there are so many interesting sessions, it was really hard for us to even narrow down what we wanted to attend, so hopefully if more of us go, we'll be able to, um, get to most of them. And we were, I think, really thoughtful about issues that are, um, that really affect our district directly, or that we think are coming up next, like there was a lot about like negotiations, and kind of were like, oh, next year, whoever goes, we should be going to those types of sessions, et cetera, so, um, tried to keep it, of course, relevant to the work that we're doing, and that was of interest professionally. So I attended a couple, um, different sessions, one was, um, just current like legal requirements right now for transgender students, perhaps not a, you know, large issue right now in our district, but certainly nationwide, so just really exploring the evolving like legal landscape of these students' rights and, you know, constantly evolving obligations and how boards work to ensure like compliance with those, uh, obligations and laws, particularly as it relates to the state of Illinois, um, so that was interesting. Uh, the attorney presenting, I actually went to, uh, law school with her, so it was really nice to see her up there and presenting. Um, the other one that I attended had to do with, um, executive coaching specifically for a new superintendent, um, so Killdeer, also District Ninety-Six, um, hired a superintendent with no previous, you know, experience, they were an internal candidate, and as part of, uh, that individual's contract, they required an executive coach for an entire year. So the executive coach was there to discuss their focus and just their process, what they focused on during like month one, months, you know, two and onward, the role that they played, um, with the board, so again, just when, when such time comes, it was interesting to see, you know, the benefit of having an executive coach alongside a new superintendent, um, in that district. And then the last one I went to was about cultural responsiveness for student success. It was a little bit geared more towards high school, um, students, it was a very large district out of, um, was it like Wheaton, DuPage, District Eighty-Eight, so, um, really large, demographically a very diverse, um, community, but just about creating like equitable, inclusive environments for all students, um, and how we implement this process, you know, through our district for improvement and monitoring the progress of all students. So those were some of the sessions that I had a chance to attend, and I know shared my notes and takeaways for more detail.
So, I mean, just sort of, I mean, I know Stephanie and, and Wesley's already said this, but it really was, I've been to conferences as well, it was actually a really good conference, there's a lot of, um, a lot of sessions out there. The nice thing is we didn't go to any of the same, two same sessions, we sort of strategized, it's like, okay, you go to this one, we go to this one. And so that was, that was really good. I mean, the unfortunate thing is, we just went on Saturday, there's really only three sessions you can go to, um, so we did, each did three on Saturday, but I went, uh, to three of them, one was on decisions, which sort of just reiterated, confirmed, I shouldn't say reiterated, confirmed what we already do, like what decisions are superintendents, what decisions are the boards, um, they had like a, a quiz, um, and I think I got about, but.
Was it a co-hoot?
Co-hoot, yeah. And then also, there was another one I went to regarding negotiations, but more of like sort of for, um, like staff, like, uh, teacher negotiations, so that was, I found very informative. And then, uh, the last one was, I'd say more of a, um, just sort of, uh, say more just informative for me, uh, our former superintendent did a presentation on, um, how she turned around the district, uh, with the board, and they actually got, also got the school board recognition, that, the same one that we got. And so, uh, Barbara Shava Lewis was there, and she was the one that gave the presentation talking about how, what they did to turn that district around and sort of make, uh, teachers feel welcome. They actually had a really poor, like, uh, employee morale, staff morale, teacher morale. It's like they're, uh, and she's turned that around, there's a very low, uh, attrition rate, um, and sort of she talked about what they did to do that, which a lot of things we also do ourselves, so, um, it was good to see that we're both doing the same thing. So, yeah, but again, I, if, if you had the time, I'd strongly suggest going, yeah, this year, 2024, so.
Side note, we also spent some time with the Art D L A Architects.
Yes.
At their post, um, event gathering.
Their big sponsor, so they do a thing, yeah.
And Wes took full advantage of the Scholastic Book Fair for Adults, tax-free books, on his own time, not the district's time, but a lot of books for himself, but it.
Think of, like, twelve books or something like that?
Yeah, it's a, it's Scholast, they have children's books, too, but it's basically
Those aren't the ones I bought.
Scholastic book fair, tax-free, and all sorts of books, too, so.
Yep.
And, yeah, there was a, there were signage with the different schools that did get the, um, recognition. I made Dave take a picture with me pointing at it. Yeah, that's it, I mean.
So just wanted an opportunity to kind of like share some of that in our own words, but then I don't know if there was any, um, questions or just anything off of that that you all had, if not, we can move on, but I just wanted to make sure we hit on, hit on that one for the time that we spent there, for the advantage and somewhat telling the public that, you know, other things that we were doing kind of behind the scenes to hopefully keep things, uh, things run smoothly here. So, yep, if there's no questions, I'll go ahead and move on.
Well, it sounds like that, uh, that you guys were able to go Saturday, but there's sessions on Friday as well that would be beneficial next time.
Yeah, I, I was at, so my principal one was actually Friday morning, and I, I wasn't super engaged with any of the afternoon ones, I kind of had a conflict anyway, so I ended up having to, to bolt out of there and, and just ended up heading, heading home, but Saturday, I mean, it was a struggle for us to pick what to go to, because with three of us, there was like at least five, maybe six sessions in each one of them that we thought would have some sort of relevancy, so we just tried to pick the ones that had the most immediate relevancy to things that we've been talking about or stuff like that, but like, um, I don't even remember, like, I, I just kept circling stuff, I'm like, oh, man, I wish we had a couple more board members here, so. Yeah, it was, it was pretty good, I mean, the topics this year, anyway, were, were pretty good in my opinion.
I think the weird thing with Friday, too, if memory serves, is there, there are tracks that are like additional costs, it's like, yes, you can go to this diversity track for an extra, you know, whatever, so we felt, you know, that it was.
Was that Saturday or Friday?
Friday.
I think there were, yeah, there was a number of those on Friday, and so I didn't attend those, because they were an extra, it was like an all-day seminar and like.
Okay.
Table breakouts and workshops and, you know, really involved stuff, and I, I didn't know what I was getting into, so I didn't want to spend any money on that stuff and then have it, you know, be, you know, fall flat or something, but the, the ones that I did attend, the free sessions that were all, were they an hour roughly?
An hour, about an hour and a half.
Hour and a half.
Yeah.
Um, those, those were all pretty good, but, yeah, Friday was more of like workshopping stuff, and then Saturday, I think, was more of that like open forum for people to just kind of wander around, you could walk into any room that you wanted at, at the start time.
Yeah, but I, I will say one thing, uh, the, uh, two of the three that I went to, it was standing room only, so.
Yeah.
It was, they were all pretty well-attended.
The principalship one was, my others were very full, but not quite that full, but there was pretty good attendance there, people wise. Oh, Doug Bolton's, his room was packed, too. It was a big room, it was a big room.
I wanted to go in the past, it's always been tough being able to thread the needle to.
It's eleven months away.
I can put it on the calendar now.
Yeah. Soccer. Okay, any other questions, comments?
Thanks for going.
Yeah, absolutely.
Definitely.
Okay, new business, I think, probably some quick items here, so we've got a couple bids to approve. First item is the Central Hauser Campus bid and recommendation, uh, so is there a motion to approve and accept Vestara's recommendation to award a contract for three million, five hundred, five thousand, eight hundred, forty-five dollars to Abbey Paving as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We can hear you, Joel. All right, got it fixed just in time to end the meeting.
Yeah.
Sorry, that was a little dig, I didn't mean that to sound smirky. Okay, so the, just, just for transparency purposes, the bid here for the three and a half, roughly three and a half million dollars, was the lowest responsible bid, and it was, trying to find my numbers here, it was pretty substantially lower than, um, many of the other bids that we got in, I got the wrong one pulled up here, sorry. Joel, I don't know, since we can hear you, do you want to take this one?
As long as you can still hear me, that's fine.
Yep, we're good, you're good.
The bid by Abbey Paving was about a hundred eighteen thousand, less than the second, uh, second lowest bidder, and substantially lower by up to almost a million, one point eight million than the very, very highest bidder, so this is a very good bid. Don't go too hard into trying to understand why, there's a lot of churn in the industry right now. Abbey believes that they, Abbey believes they know what they're doing, and Remesh and the architect have vetted that they are capable of doing the work and are responsive, so they should give us good quality, and there's no reason to doubt these numbers, and remember that we do have a general allowance in the bid to cover any, um, unexpected overages, so we're covered in that sense as well.
Yeah, thanks, Joel. So, that's what I was looking for, yeah, so like roughly three five, three six, four three, let's call it five million, five point four, so definitely quite a, a swing in here, and, um, much lower than what Remesh had originally estimated our budget to be at, um, uh, much higher number, I'm not finding it right now.
Was it the five sixty-two?
No, we were, our original was like four something?
It's, it's definitely a discount from, from where we thought we'd be.
Yeah, and Remesh is pretty, oh, yeah, you're right, it, this was the five, five million, six eighty-two, was what Remesh originally had kind of put together with everything, so the three point five is, is a surprise, like, it's a good spot for us to be in, so.
Do we, do we have anything on the reputation of this firm? Because I guess I'll go back to our experience with the firm at Hollywood, that's been our most.
Actually, I, I had the same conversation with Joel, so Joel and I talked about this, so, um, he can explain it much better than I can, but, um, he's comfortable with it, there is a lot of churn in the industry, so, um, uh, because it did cause me like, I'm glad it's lower, but one point five million seemed like, hmm, what are we really getting into, so, but he wa, was comfortable, so the, Remesh is comfortable, I'm comfortable, so.
Yeah, we do have a letter from, I think we have a letter from everybody, we got one from Remesh saying that we vetted it, we got one from D L A saying that they vetted it, we got one from Abbey saying, yep, we're, we're good, um, so, looked at their website, looks like they do school projects, there wasn't much out there that I could find, so I'm glad you talked to Joel, I didn't, I didn't go that far, but. Anything else? Roll call? All right, roll call it is, could you ca, call the roll, Kathy?
Okay, Ms. Gunn?
Hi.
Ms. Kayla?
Hi.
Ms. Class?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Mr. Barsadi?
Hi.
Mr. Fun?
Hi.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Hi.
Motion passes.
We're really making progress tonight, because this is gonna be our final piece of our major construction project with that one, campus one, all right, um.
There's a lot more fanfare around that one, I think.
Yeah, maybe we can do our ribbon ceremony now that it's, when it's all done and celebrated all at the same time.
We don't have a pandemic and things like that.
Yeah.
Or would that just jinx it?
Maybe. All right, second one, uh, more general maintenance for the tuck-pointing over at Ames, so is there a motion to accept Vestara's recommendation to award a contract for three hundred forty-nine thousand and seven dollars to M B B as presented?
So moved.
So moved, second.
All right, um, this one, similar situation, there was a very wide range of bids, the three hundred forty-nine thousand, seven dollars is the lowest responsible bidder by about fifty-five thousand dollars, and the range on this goes all the way up to seven hundred forty-two thousand, there were a few contractors that ended up not putting a bid in, um, so I'm gonna assume Joel kind of ditto on what you said before, just contractors looking for job in the current market as it stands right now, because this one was below our, our estimate that, uh, Remesh gave us as well.
That's correct.
All right. And our estimate was four fifty, so we're getting about a hundred thousand lower than what, uh, what we estimated, so not quite as big of a swing, but more, more kind of in line, I think, with general expectations on this, too, so. Any commentary before we vote? Nope, all right, Kathy, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Kayla?
Hi.
Ms. Class?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Mr. Barsadi?
Hi.
Mr. Fun?[1749.11] Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Ms. Gunn?
Hi.
Mr. Rearhead?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, last item for tonight is a chronic absenteeism proposed reporting consideration. So I think, was it Don put this one in? Don, you want to come up real quick and? Give us an overview of this extensive work you've done for us.
Yeah, so the board had asked for just a different way of taking a look at chronic absenteeism on a regular basis. So Don and the tech team have put together an idea here for board feedback.
Yeah, so we just, you know, leveraged our, you know, Power School data, did export, just, you know, put in this format. Just looking for any feedback on it if it meets the need.
Is this the kind of thing the board is looking for?
So the historical data and like all the comparison stuff, was that like?
That actually, I'd done in December.
Okay.
When we started talking about it, just pulled it off the report card.
Okay.
Just went back to the report card data because that's where you find it, yeah.
I guess I was looking at, oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at this and there's just that graph in there. I mean, I find it helpful, especially that you highlighted like Riverside and where we fall. But I was wanting to know if we can, if there's any way, and I know there's a lot of districts in here and I'm not, for me, there's basically only four colors, so.
Yeah, I just, I didn't feel like, you know, showing the other districts, not, I mean, it's all public. But figured, seeing where we are relative to the state and where the other whiskey districts are, you know, I mean, it's, those are all the whiskey districts that we continually compare ourselves against. That's why I just went with those.
I mean, I, I don't know if the people would find this helpful, if you maybe average the other whiskey districts and then see if where we compare to the averages, because there are so many here.
Well, this, I really did this more of just kind of give you some context of where the trends were, you know, over the last five years. And then when looking at our current data, you have a little bit of context of, you know, where we were, where we've been over the past five years. And now where we're headed, you know.
It would be good to see. So I guess I'm, am I hearing you right that you purposely, because the way I'm seeing it, they're, they're all gray, yeah, other than Riverside and the state.
Yeah, I mean, I could, there could be eighteen different colors in there and it's.
It could be, yeah. Well, I mean, if, if it's less busy to trim it back some. But I guess, with all the districts being gray, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's interesting, but you can't really tell who's who.
But it's really that second attachment that I think Don has been posing as the one that we regularly look at.
This is, this was just kind of background data.
This is where chronic absenteeism is in our region.
Been the last five years.
Oh, I see, okay, okay.
The, what would be the trimester is, yeah, this one. We're only reporting on ours.
Because we wouldn't be able to get.
That other data trimester.
The other data at trimester, we could get it annually because it is part of the state report.
Yeah, that was just more of just background, background information. Some context for the report.
Is it, is there a way in the, I think this is super helpful, so thank you for putting it together.
You're welcome.
Is there a way to sort of see like, okay, this year Ames is at this chronic absentee percentage for first trimester? And this is where they were last year in the first trimester? Like, do we have historical data that we can see if the problem is getting better or if it's getting worse?
No, because we don't, because we don't do the accumulatives at that trimester. Because the, the data, once it's reported, we did, we did look at doing that. This would really serve as kind of our baseline moving forward.
Okay.
Yeah, so now we'd have, you know, moving forward, next year, we'd be able, now we have this in stone, now we can reference it.
Yeah, so basically, we do have, we may not have trimester specific data that we could look to, but there could be a line in there because we know the full year data for the school, right? So we could compare a trimester against a full year. It might not be a perfect comparison, but it would give us some indication of the way things are going, right?
Last year's data?
Yeah.
Sure.
I don't know, I personally would find that helpful. I'm not sure if anybody else has a point of view on it.
I guess for my, I mean, I don't know if that would, for me, I'd be more interested in seeing that yearly trend than the trimester trend. Because I'm, I'm looking at this, I'm looking at this right now and I'm seeing sort of some pretty big discrepancies between some of the schools, which I was actually sort of surprised by. I thought that would have been relatively level.
And, and I think, and believe me, I'm not an expert on chronic absenteeism, but when you're, when you're, the smaller the sample size, sometimes the more distorted it can be. Because you could have one student that was sick for, you know, a week, two weeks. And, but then they're not sick the rest of the year.
Right.
So it's, you could have these instances where people were out for a period of time, but then they're not sick, so it's.
No, and I, I get that, but I guess it's the smaller schools that have the, actually the lower.
Right, yeah, it seems like the bigger schools have the higher percentages of timeout or chronic absentee.
But, I mean, if you'd find that helpful, Selena, I mean, I have no objection. I mean, I don't want to say no to that, but, I mean, for me, it was just to see the yearly trend, like.
Well, we'll have, you know, again, we'll have the cumulative trends. We'll look at it every trimester, chunk it. And then, you know, then we will have the full for the year that we can compare against even the, you know, even just the entire district level data, we can compare against past years. And then moving forward, we, you know, we always have this report to look at, very much like we did with the attendance reports. That kind of became our.
I think the reason why, the reason why I had asked for the trimester data is because for, I thought that waiting for an entire year to go by to assess.
Oh, yeah.
Whether or not there's been improvement or whether there's been degrading of attendance is, is like too, too late. Like, if there's an issue, it needs to be.
No, I'm.
Recognized and addressed before another year goes by, to the extent that we're capable of doing that. Because I understand there are, you know, nuanced reasons for why a student is, is, may not be able to make it to school. But I do think that this is helpful. And I also think that, you know, I think everyone, I probably don't need to say this, but like, we can have this presented, but if there's no action, what's the point of having it presented, right? And so I think having this presented on a fairly regular basis sort of encourages us to keep an eye on it and remember that it's potentially something that we need to find ways and to encourage attendance and.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not saying we shouldn't do trimester, trimester reporting. I was just saying, comparing the first trimester to a year, for me, wasn't mean, didn't mean that much to me.
Well, I mean, I would find that, I understand why we can't go back and get that data, but going forward.
Going forward, yeah.
I like the idea of it because it does kind of allow you, to the extent you can, sort of, you're trending or maybe forecasting, you know, so that you can see if perhaps you're trending towards a higher overall year chronic absenteeism because your first trimester is already, you know, much larger than it was last year. Or conversely, like, it's already small. So, I mean, I certainly find value in doing this, which I think we're gonna be doing at a trimester basis. But I also appreciate and agree with Selena's recommendation that going forward, if it is possible, to compare trimester by trimester, just to see if there are like any sort of forecasting that can be done as to how we're trending towards the overall year's absenteeism.
Can we compare to?
Like point in time, like trimester one in twenty-four versus trimester one in twenty-three.
Moving forward.
But, yeah, I could see.
Yeah.
Have all that, our own internal trend data on a trimester basis.
Yeah, I would find that helpful.
But then still be able to report out, you know, we can report our, out our cumulative averages for the, you know, for the last six, you know, so keep those, put that in a chart as well, so at least you can see where, where the trend data is going.
And for our purposes, like, it's, it's not about getting into the weeds, but it would be, I think, where you're kind of going, Selena, is if this number keeps going up and we keep asking what's going on and Martha says, we got it handled. It's like, clearly you don't. What resources do you need? What do we need to approve? Do you need more money? Do you need more people, whatever it might be? So I think from a governance perspective, keeping your pulse on it, I think, is good so that we can raise flags or ask questions if needed. So if, this is in Power Schools, like, my understanding is this was not a difficult set of data to get or won't be to continue getting.
Yeah, exactly. We just exported it and tried to make it in a, what we thought would be a, you know, presentable, easy to read format.
Yeah.
And if you have any suggestion, you know, if there's something about the format, we can always, you know, make, make adjustments to it as well.
And I know, just based on past conversations, bring that back up again, like, we've even, what was the recent thing we did? We contracted with, who's the support person we just got from, for like the late.
West Forty?
At the A-Lab, yeah, from West Forty, yeah, the alternative learning.
To try to like get deeper with, because like, we know who these students are. They are chronically absent, so the buildings know who they are and they're working towards it. I think for us, it's, is this getting better or is this getting worse? And what do we need to do about it if it's getting worse? So I, I think it's, this is a nice, simple chart for us to look at three times a year, I think, and then start comparing it once we have more data, for me.
And would you want it like as a new business or a discussion item or even under superintendent's report versus like sometimes we attach informational pieces just under informational items? I know that's something the board thinks over in a public meeting.
I would say it would, it would make sense to be under the superintendent's report personally.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
We kind of looked at it as we do the, the enrollment reports every month. It really just becomes another one of those types of reports for us where, but we just do it every trimester.
Okay.
So we've come with that, with that same enrollment report.
It's just that I'll point out that we would highlight it more like in the meeting for discussion.
I think since this is new, we should probably go that course. And then, once we're comfortable with it, if everybody's comfortable with it, maybe we can move it. But I think, to Selena's concerns, I think, having it as an item, it's not an action item. So just, I think, a quick conversation, here's what this trimester is. I don't think we should, we probably need to spend a ton of time on it unless the problem's really spiking, but.
And we could do the annual reporting based on getting the comparison with the other districts. That is in the state report card. So whether we add it in November, will you have student achievement or some other time?
Yeah, could just add it on to the existing data we have.
I do think like, like, including it in the superintendent's report would be helpful because it would be interesting to get your perspective on how things are trending. And, you know, maybe there is some reason in a particular trimester where things have gotten a little out of whack for one school or another, just to hear a little bit more commentary than just the raw numbers, which I think could be really helpful.
All right, thank you, Don.
Thank you.
All right, I'm guessing no public comment?
There's none.
All right, so that's the end of this meeting. Future meeting dates are going to be on February seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. That'll be our committee of the whole meeting at seven PM in the multipurpose room at Central Elementary School. February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four will be our regular business meeting at seven PM here in the Hauser Learning Resource Center, or, I don't know, Hauser Auditorium. We gonna be in the auditorium? All right.
Because the student awards.
Ah, yeah, we're gonna need the auditorium. Okay, March second, two thousand and twenty-four, Committee of the Whole, seven PM at the multipurpose room at Hollywood Elementary School. And then March, March twen, March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, regular business meeting at seven PM in the, here in the Hauser Learning Resource Center. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.